Last thing I wanted to talk about was on October 30th at Plares, there's going to be an event. It's calling it Trick or Trade and whether you have students there, anybody can attend this. And it's going to be a night of career exploration, candy, costumes, and a lot of family fun. That's all I have.
Thank you so much. Onto the superintendent section. We have a superintendent update.
Yeah, I'll start. The only real thing I have right now is with Mr. DeSenza doing a report card update for us.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks again for having me here to share some great news about our school report card that was just released last month. So as I do every year, I'm going to kind of go through some of the highlights of our report card in some depth and talk a little bit about some steps we're taking to respond to some of the data. So I'm going to start just with a little disclaimer, and I do this every year. The state report card, although it receives a lot of headlines, is only one piece of how we measure ourselves as a school district and how we want to be viewed as a school district. There's a lot of ways, including visiting our schools, our quality profile, talking to students and families, that you can gain a much more well-rounded picture of our school district. However, the state report card does come out every year, and so we do use it as a guide for decision-making throughout the year. And of course, everything we do, whether it's professional development or our curriculum, the decisions we make throughout the year is guided by our portrait of a titan. So in the end, our goal is to produce individuals who will go out into our community that have these six attributes in order to be successful in their lives. Okay, and you could pass that one up too. Thank you. I'm going to go over here so I can see a little bit too. It is 51 slides, so. Okay, so the stars and I'm going to show you a lot of stars and charts and numbers. And behind all those stars and charts and numbers are individual students, right? So when we see growth and we see areas that we're excelling in, for us, that means that we have students who are more prepared for the future, ready for graduation, and ready for the workforce. And we see when we see things that we have declined in or need to improve, that is a motivator for us to make some changes so that we can have more students who are ready for life after school. All right, so our rating system, there are now officially seven categories. There have been six up until this year, a new one has been added this year. It's one that we've been talking about for the past few years, but now it's actually on the report card. So the overall is just an overall designation for districts and schools based on all of the other six components below. Achievement is how well students perform on the state test, so how well they achieve on the state test. Progress is growth, so it's a measure of growth based on students' past performance. Gap closing is how well schools and districts are doing, closing gaps with some of our subgroups of students, achievement gaps for students. Graduation rate is the rate at which you graduate students. Our K3 literacy is probably one of the most complex measures, but it is a measure of how well we're doing and improving our proficiency of our K3 readers. And the newest rated area is college, career, workforce, and military readiness, which is the state's definition of how well students are prepared for the future, whether in technical fields or for college or military. And so I always like to do a side-by-side comparison to previous years and trends over a number of years. And so you'll see in all of those components what our overall star rating was for each of those this year compared to last year. And this is a graph that depicts the state averages for all of the stars. And the red circles indicate where we fell in those ratings. So for achievement, 34.6% of schools fell in three stars, and that is where we fell. And then you could see for the rest of the components there. It gives us kind of a snapshot across against the state average. All right, so I'm going to go into each of the components. This is an image that shows you the six components. The six components are weighted differently that feed into that overall rating. So the two, half of our overall rating is based on achievement and progress. The other four components comprise 12.5% of the overall rating. All right, so our overall rating this year was four stars, same as last year. You receive an overall number of points. You could see kind of how everything is weighted in the chart here based on what we, the number of points we earned in each category, the assigned weight, weighted points. And it adds up to 3.406, which is just slightly below last year's, still within the four-star rating. All right, so the first component is achievement, and again, we were at three stars again this year. Achievement is measured by the Performance Index. The Performance Index is a measure of how well students do at each of the categories of achievement from limited to advanced plus. For students who are grade, subject level accelerated for their grades, they get weighted more if they do well compared to other students. And so Performance Index gets calculated into an overall point, and we received 85.6, slightly higher than last year, Performance Index points, and then that's compared to a number that is the highest number possible, which is the top 2% of school districts in the state, which is 109.8 this year. And so you get a percentage of the 109.8, which we fell at 77.9%. And so that outlines how you achieve the different stars below. Stop me at any point if you want to, okay? All right, and so this, I described how you get, you can get more than one point aside, assigned to a student at their achievement level based on how they do. A proficient student is equal to one point. An untested student is zero points, and advanced plus is 1.3 points. So that's how the points accumulate for the district. And here's our Performance Index over time, so you could see a steady growth. There's the trend line there, which we're really happy about, that we've steadily made progress over the past number of years in Performance Index. This is our first-string district counterparts and where we fell with our Performance Index. And you could see we are remaining up near the top of all first-string school districts that are similar to us. Progress is the next measure. Progress is also, can be termed as value-added or student growth based on what the state expects a student to grow from year to year. And again, we received four stars again this year, like last year. And you'll see there's two Xs there. Those are the COVID years. There was no progress measure, but again, a steady increase since 2015 in our star rating for progress. This is a chart that the, that is really helpful to us for the nuts and bolts. So the specifics of value-added or progress have not been released yet. That'll come out in the next couple of weeks. However, we know based on this chart where all of our grade-level tested content areas fared with value-added or progress. And so you'll see that the dark blue, light blue colors are above expected growth. The greens are expected growth. Yellow is less than expected growth. And red is less than a significant, less than expected to a significant degree. So this really helps us diagnose where some of the areas are that we want to focus our attention and supports for. So in progress, there are 18 tests that have a progress measure. Six indicated that they exceeded expected growth. Six indicated that they made expected growth. And tests with our highest possible progress rating, so above expected growth, the dark blue, were our Math 8, Geometry, Biology, American History, and Algebra. So we definitely celebrate their work they did to grow their students. Gap closing is the next area. You'll see that we, it's based off a total number of points passed, earned, divided by the total points possible. We earned 41 points this year for 58.6% of the possible points, an increase over last year. And again, four stars like last year. The gap closings component, it tells us how well we are doing in growing or closing the achievement gap and growing students in the areas of ELA, math, gifted graduation for all of these subgroups below. So each of those subgroups gets measured based on, I think if you go to the next slide, they will get measured on these areas to see if they, the state sets a level of, an annual performance goal, so a goal for each of these groups, and it's whether or not that we met that goal that the state sets for them. And you'll see our gap-closing star rating over time. So we've been pretty steady the past five years or so with some increase from some of the early years of measurement. Some highlights, so eight out of our nine subgroups, those subgroups that I listed, met their, exceeded their achievement target in math. And eight out of nine of our subgroups exceeded their achievement in ELA as well. All subgroups exceeded their graduation rate target. And we met our performance goal this year for chronic absenteeism. So chronic absenteeism and is any student who misses 10% or more of the school year for any reason, excused, unexcused, whatever. But we decreased our chronic absenteeism last year, 2.3% from the previous year, which is really exciting because that's a target we did not hit the previous year. And we put some really intentional effort into it, and we saw some really significant growth across the district and just about every building. And this one was kind of cool. We made sure we shared this with our EL tutors in the district as well. The state selects 19 similar districts. They have a metric that they use based on a series of different pieces of data to determine that these are the, there are 19 districts that are similar to us. And our English learner students, they're made, their growth in the, in meeting their achievement, or closing their achievement gap was the highest of all of our like districts, which is pretty exciting for them. And these are the, if, yes, the districts that are considered most like us, okay? Graduation, we continue to do a really great job graduating our students. The high school is, has put a lot of effort into that the past few years. And so our graduation, our four, they measure a four-year graduation rate and a five-year graduation rate. Our four-year graduation rate is 95.7%. Last year it was 96.1%, so relatively the same. Five-year graduation rate, you could see it there. And then they take those two, combine them for a weighted graduation rate. Our weighted graduation rate is 95.9, which is an increase of last year's as well. So again, four stars. And you could see over time since 2012, you'll see our graduation rates over time. And you could see over the past two years, we have had the, you know, two highest graduation rates in school history. So, and Dr. Smithberger already did the math, because if you know, the, this graduation rate that I showed you is not the group that graduated this past spring. It's the group from last, the spring before. And this last group that just graduated, their graduation rate is, the four-year graduation rate is going to be 98.3%, which again will mark the highest graduation rate in history of the school. All right, early literacy, a complex one, but a really fun one to talk about. The overall literacy percent, you get an overall early literacy percent. We were at 75.7%. Last year, 78.8%. Improved literacy is a measure that tells us how many students move from off-track to on-track. And ours was 51%, 59% last year. And then third-grade proficiency is the third piece of the early literacy component, and that is the proficiency of our third graders in the ELA test. So, and then promotion to fourth grade, how, what percentage of our students are promoted to fourth grade, which is 100%. So we went from four stars to three stars, but there's some really cool data behind those stars that I'm excited to share. Okay, I talked about these already, described them already. I'm going to re-mention our 19 most similar districts because these next slides talk about that. So this is us compared to, compared to our 19 most similar school districts in the state of Ohio. And you'll see in 2022, we ranked 12 out of, actually it's 20 schools similar to us, us being the 21st. 12th out of 21 school districts in our early literacy, our overall percent that was assigned to us. We moved up to 11th place in 2023. And then you'll see a steady increase, sixth and now fifth this past year. So the, you know, the percentages sometimes go down, but you have to put them into perspective of all the school districts in the state and those that are similar to us to get a better picture of how we're faring. And you could see some really marked improvement here is, so this is the overall literacy component. So as a, as a school district, we were 100, at 75.7. We were the 185th highest overall literacy component ra, rating of any, of the school districts in the state of Ohio out of 607. So that's really a great testament to our early literacy work. Now, improving literacy, that's the percentage of students that are moved from off-track to on-track. 51% of our off-track students in K3 moved to on-track this past school year. 51% is the 77th highest percentage in the state of Ohio out of 607 school districts. 146 students moved from off-track to on-track last school year, which is, I mean, that number in itself is exciting to think about. And again, some comparison over time in 2022. And this really, I think, aligns with a lot of the work we did, K3 with early literacy, which is why it makes me so excited, is that the work that the teachers are doing and the professional development that we've had and the support we've been providing, I think, is really paying off. So in 2022, we had a 31%, 31.9% of our students moved from off-track to on-track, and that ranked us 11th out of 21. The following year, 41%, which is eight out of the 21 school districts. And then you could see the improvement over time. So even though we went from, you know, 59% to 51%, I'll talk a little bit more about that. We're still, you know, the second highest of any similar school district with us. And here is our overall trend for moving students from off-track to on-track, our improved literacy. This, this is probably my favorite slide. And so in, this tells us the number of students that we have off-track, and the state tells us, based on our standardized assessment we've used, the same assessment we've used the past three years. So in 22, 23, we had 481 off-track students. And you could see this past year, we were 286 off-track students. And so one of the reasons I really highlight this is we moved 51% of our students off-track. They were some of the most, the toughest kids to move on-track now. We're, we're working with such a smaller group of individual students who are off-track now that it is harder work to move some of those kids to on-track. And we're still making significant gains with those students. So that's really the exciting part for me. All right, college, career, workforce, and military readiness, our newest category unrated last year. We were, we got a three-star rating this year with 64.5% of our students being workforce, career, and military-ready as, as defined by the state. So here are the components to it. These are, if a student meets any of these criteria, they are considered to be college, career, or workforce or military-ready. And so in last, actually, this is another disclaimer. This is not last year's group. This is actually similar to the graduation component. This is the year, this is the year before they're, that group. So this is just like graduation rate a year in the rears. And so we had 64.5% attained at least one of these components. And you could see some, a steady increase over time. And I'll be honest with you, a lot of school districts now, it just becomes a matter of making sure that our record-keeping on these students and all of those categories, and we're able to identify accurately that the students have attained a lot of these things, are ways for us to, to make sure that we hit the mark here when we, when we can. All right, here's our building. The next group of slides will probably go pretty quick, but here's all of our buildings, their overall rating and all of their component ratings. Some don't have obviously graduation or college, career, workforce, or early literacy, but these are all the stars that they achieve for each individual building. And then I go into each of the individual buildings. Overall rating, a four-star for the high school. Three stars for the middle school. Big Creek, four and a half stars. Brook Park, three stars. And Grindstone, again, five stars. So we celebrated them and their achievement of five stars again this year.
Will those buildings that are struggling somewhat, like see added resources or extra interventions to?
Yeah, for sure. I'll talk about that. I think I have some slides on how we respond coming up. And then if for those don't give you enough info, I'm happy to explain more. So our responses to the, to the report card. So as far as achievement, that's an area on which we can, that we can address. It's one of the categories. Our MTSS, our multi-tiered system of support, which we used to call RTI, Response to Intervention, that's more of a holistic approach. That is something that we've been putting a lot of effort into, into shoring up in order for us to be able to respond to individual students in a holistic way to address their achievements and their gaps. There's still the focus on our teacher-based teams. I think that's where a lot of the magic happens in our schools, when the teams of teachers that, that deliver the same content or the same courses, that they work together to improve practice and talk about the impact that they're having on students with the type of instruction that they're, they're giving. We are analyzing and continue to analyze this data. All of our teacher-based teams spend their first couple of weeks together looking at last year's state testing data to identify areas of strength and areas of deficiency. And they use that information throughout the year in order to have impact cycles for their TBTs as far as instruction is concerned. And continued PD with our instructional practices. And then here's one specific, our TBT release days for our targeted tested content areas. So those are, we'll, we'll pool members of the grade level that we may find aren't performing to the level that, based on the state testing that we want. And we'll spend a day with them looking at things like aligning their curriculum, whether, whether their assessments are rigorous, what instructions going on in the classroom, what needs they have in the classroom as far as addressing some of those areas of concern. Always going back to the data from the state test to see what those deficiencies might be. So we'll pool those one or two times throughout the year in order to shore up and give them an extra layer of support. Progress, again, our teacher-based teams do a lot of that work as far as growing our students. UDL is another initiative that kind of weaves through our daily practices that addresses student progress. Gap closing through chronic, chronic absenteeism is continuing to be a goal this year, although we improved to 2.3% and hit our improvement goal. We know that studies show that when students are in school, they perform better. They're here for more instruction, so we're going to continue. That's actually one of our outcomes in our district is to continue to improve chronic absenteeism. Graduation rate, there's a series of different supports that the high school offers, including alternative pathways to graduation. Early literacy is really founded in our, previously our RTI work and our MTSS work. So we're going to continue to move forward with that as we're seeing gains. And college and career readiness, I know Dr. Smithberger spoke to you about the number of students taking AP tests. That's actually one of the factors that could show if a student is college, career-ready as well. So we're going to continue to push our high school students to rigorous coursework. And then we have our outcomes. This is something that is important to share, but we have three outcomes that our district has that all of our buildings adopt as well and create action steps to meet these outcomes. Our first one is to improve, improve overall student achievement, and that goes back to our Performance Index of improving that by 3%. So that's our goal. And we have a series of action steps that we're taking as a district and every building is taking in order to try to increase achievement by 3%. Reducing chronic absenteeism is our next one. So we improved it 2.3%. Our goal is reducing it another 3% this year with similar efforts and some added layers as well. And outcome three is fostering the well-being and readiness of all learners. And we have a tiered fidelity inventory that students participate in to help us measure that. But that's really just creating that social and emotional supports for students and behavioral supports for students so that they can be successful in moving those barriers that they have to, to learning. Is that the last slide, Vicky? Yeah. So are there any other questions about, like, yeah, I mean, some of our, some of our buildings have title services as well, and so that's really important. BPE is building wide title, and so working with our title tutors and our lead title teacher over there, Kerry Rump, doing a lot of work to try to make sure that we're growing students, closing gaps. And a lot of it's working. And then focusing in on those areas that are showing some dips in achievement or progress and providing them time and supports as well.
Going back about 40-some slides, I just, it came, it wasn't a question I'd asked before, but with the performance score, and you were coming up with how the formula for that just seems a little whack. Just wondering, is that like something that states across, how, how did it, how do they come up with that formula? And how, what's the word I'm looking for, valid, I guess, from an educational research point of view? Or is it more of a legislative score?
Yeah, so Performance Index, I mean, I don't know how scientific it is, but, but, you know, they, I think that what they're trying to do I think that what they're trying to do, the, you know, the, the thought behind it is we want to reward districts that have students perform far above proficient. And so they label, they provide extra points for that and deter stu-, deter districts from not testing students, which is why you get a zero for untested students and everything in between. The top, the top number, the one-hundred-and-nine-point-two percent or whatever, or one-hundred-and-nine-point-two points is the top two percent of schools. So I know they try to not make it that very top school and they try to give, you know, even it out with our, only our top two percent of school districts in the state. But I don't, I don't, doesn't sound very scientific to me. It sounds pretty arbitrary, but it gives us a measuring stick that we try to use from year to year.
It's, that has been, that's been a moving kind, well, our whole report card is, right? Like, I mean, what Nick presents on how we're evaluated now could look different the way it is next year. So it used to be with performance index, you could, the total number of points was a hundred and twenty. Well, nobody ever received a hundred and twenty. That would, that would have meant at that time, every single kid in your district scored at the advanced level. So then they added the advanced plus, and then they said, well, let's, let's create this number then. At the end of the day, they're out, I will say, the outcome of the report card is still to rank people. It's still to say, here's whose number one in the state, they've got the highest performance index. And then here you are, although, I don't even know what our number is. Do you know?
Oh, in the line?
Yeah, I don't even know what it is. But it's still meant to do that, even though, even though they say that's not what it is, you still get a star for it or whatever. But it really, at the end of the day, if you, if you see it when it goes to the news, you know, Solon had, was Solon number one this year again? Yeah. Solon has the highest performance index rating in the state. So it's that, is that average of that two percent, it's still just to rank you. And nobody can get a hundred and thirty on your performance index. It's not possible. So at least they did look at that, because that's what it used to be measured on, where, here's where the hundred and twenty was. And that, again, that range there, it's, everybody still fell into line at, at that point. But they did the average, making it like, it does districts a favor to do that, but it really doesn't, still ranks everybody.
Any other questions?
Can you talk for just a couple of minutes about what's happening in the middle school to address some of the, specifically what caught my eye was, was the progress numbers at, at the middle school?
Yeah, caught our eyes too. So there are some areas, fifth grade being one. It's pretty cool, though. Today, we spent, I spent about an hour with, and it was Lori Hurst, Assistant Principal at the middle schools, brought together our fourth and our fifth grade, our fourth grade instructional chairs from each building and our fifth grade team leaders. And they spent an hour talking about that transition from fourth to fifth grade. They actually went and visited, our team leaders from the middle school went and visited fourth grade and spent a day in our fourth grade classroom, seeing what types of structures and routines are in place there, what type of instruction is happening. And then our fourth grade teachers came up and spent the day with our middle school teachers as well to kind of get a glimpse into, okay, what, how can we bridge that transition even further? What are some things that are really successful that are happening in the fourth grade that is showing significant progress as far in that measure? And replicate that in the fifth grade. And what are some things that we could do in fourth grade to help prepare students for that transition? So those are the types of things. I think there's a lot of factors. Transition being one of the factors that can lead to some areas of concern. But I think there's a lot of other factors too, that we're looking at. Consistency of our, of our instructional staff at a content area and at a grade level. Our fourth grade's been pretty, you know, consistent with who teaches what. And so we have some work to do to support our teachers who may be in a newer content area as well. So, yeah, we're looking at all those things and the data that, from the state test to show us specifically what part of, you know, our ELA growth maybe isn't as strong. Is it writing? Is it reading? Is it, you know, in math? What is, what are the components of the math tests that are the, that are the lowest? So, and that's the work they're doing in the TBTs. Our coaches and coordinators are going out to those, those teacher-based teams and spending time with them to help support, guide, and coach as well. So, yeah, we definitely are using that information to send the, the right support in the right way.
And I, I will say, I give a kudos to Nick and, because it, it's glaring to us. It is glaring. And Nick and I had a conversation when it came out, because we're saying, our kids in fourth grade are achieving, and they're achieving at high levels. So what does happen when it goes, when they go to fifth grade? And so there's, there's been some critical and difficult conversations with the fifth grade staff. And there have been some aha moments of, let's take what they're doing in fourth grade. And they're able, they're capable, they're actually performing in fourth grade. And you could, we can go by building, by building, by building or whatnot. And so you had that, what, at the end of the year, at the beginning of this year? Like, you sat down and kind of, you know, one of, one of the things is, like, let, data don't lie, right? And so we're going to put it in front of you. We want you to take a look at it, have an aha moment and say, okay. And then all the things that Nick's and, and their team is, you know, the things that they're doing then to work specifically with fifth grade math team, fifth grade ELA team. Because we see it and we know that something has to change, something, we need to do something differently.
Probably could not have a better person to address middle school.
Middle school, yeah. That's right. I love that, having the crossover between the fourth grade teams. That makes so much sense. It's a great idea.
I, I do have a question. If we were to look back then, like, at last year's, is, is it the group of students, like, is fourth grade, if we looked at last year's, would fourth grade be the, the group that's struggling? Or has it consistently been fifth grade that's the issue?
For two or three years now. It has been consistently there, yeah. Yeah, we do look at that, yeah, because cohorts of students. I mean, there's a number of reasons why cohorts of students may be impacted differently than others and COVID being one of them, you know. But no, this is, we've, we've identified that it's not a cohort issue. It's a, it's a, you know, it's that grade level, the content area. We have to make sure we're aligned, you know, that, that our pacing is accurate, is right, is aligned with the state assessment and the state standards, all those things. That we're just going to spend more time with them to try to diagnose where those issues are. Anyone else?
Okay, well, thank you very much.
I wanted to say one thing before Nick's, well, you can say, you can go ahead, Nick. But I, I want to say the, again, the, how focused and intentional we are this year with, what, I think what Nick didn't state up there is that our, we have one goal for the district, one goal. And that goal is to develop and implement an MTSS framework that ensures support for all students to grow academically, behaviorally, and socially. And then the three outcomes that he listed as a result of that. And again, I think we were pretty excited when we landed on that as a team, having that conversation of what our goals would look like this year. We've really worked the last so many years on how our TBT, BLT, DLT structures work and are in place. We feel like we're in a really good spot with that for the most part. So to actually kind of switch gears on our, our one goal this year, but the outcomes that we, that they, that we've addressed, and then that each building has the same exact outcome. But then their action steps of what they're going to do as a building to achieve those outcomes and the goals that they've, the, what they've set in their outcomes. Again, very focused, very intentional, and we think that in the end, it, it pays dividends. So, and that's, that's a kudos to both Mr. DeSenza and Ms. Sanson and the work that their two departments are doing collaboratively to do the work around all of this. So kudos to them. And to our staff. Our staff is, I mean, today, we had PD. And if you could just sit at our PD's and see the, the work that they're doing and the level of, of what they're presenting and, and how we continue to build these strong instructional practices. That's really where we're seeing the work that our staff is doing, paying off with the achievement that our students are, are obtaining. So it's good work. It's great to see.
Tracy, did you have anything else?
No, unless you guys had any questions about my update I sent on Friday, but I'm good.
Next on the agenda is a resolution. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution to appoint Jill Rowe, Treasurer of the Berea City School District for a term of five years, effective August first of 2026 through July thirty-first of 2031, as shown in the exhibit.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirkey?
Yes.
Consent agenda. It's recommended that items D four through D nineteen be approved as part of the consent agenda unless a Board of Education wishes to have an item removed.
So moved.
Second.
No, I'm on. Oh, there we go. So again, most of the items on here are routine consent agenda items. We have retirements, coming faster this year than I've ever seen them. Classified staff, Christine Armelli, she's a bus driver. She's retiring in February. She's been with the district since nineteen ninety-seven. And Dave Yakamo, also a bus driver, is going to retire in February, and he's been with us since 2012. On our certified side, Denise Crock, who's an art teacher at Grindstone. She's been with the district. These folks are all staying until the end of the year. She's been with the district since nineteen ninety-four. Sue Olmacher is a first-grade teacher at Big Creek. She's been with us since nineteen ninety-five. And then Ms. Erin Jones is our music teacher at Big Creek, and she's been with us since nineteen ninety-three. So we're excited for them as they look towards to retirement at the end of the year and those couple in February.
I know a lot of us, our star children have had many of those teachers. So congratulations to all of them. There aren't any questions? We'll take a roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Item number twenty, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the memo of understanding between Franklin University and the Berea City School District for pre-student teaching field experience. Student teaching clinical experience and advanced degree administrator internships as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
Just a, a new articulation agreement for student teachers.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirkey?
Yes.
It's recommended, I'm sorry, number twenty-one, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the supplemental contract as listed below.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Epstein.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Number twenty-two, consent agenda. It's recommended that items twenty-three, D twenty-three and twenty-four be approved as part of a consent agenda unless a Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed.
So moved.
Second.
So just real quick. So the first one, obviously, is we've added students to Payment Allo since the last meeting. And then the second meeting, or the second item on there is that parent transportation agreement. This is a result of the resolution that the board passed at the last meeting. We now are doing a individual contract with a, a parent for that.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Number twenty-five. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the tuition-free twelfth-grade student for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirkey?
Yes.
Number twenty-six, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the education alternatives transportation agreement as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
Only if you have questions.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Number twenty-seven, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the merger of understanding with the Berea Baseball Association as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
So this is a MOU with the Berea Baseball Association for them to put some work into that old unused field on the, like, if you're looking at rain back there to the right. And the city, if you read the contract, Mike actually did a good job of working with them to work on the wording in the contract. So the city's responsible for obtaining any of the funding. The district's not responsible for that. They'll line it, they'll take care of it. We mow it, because we, we mow that property anyhow as it is. And then the one thing that we put in there is that the district still reserves the right to do whatever with that field, because it is our property if at any time. And they would also go through the same process to have, reserve the field, to schedule times and things like that, that we already have in place for any of our other facilities. That's a good thing for another field, small field, so it'll be the younger kids that'll be playing on there.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirkey?
Yes.
Number twenty-eight, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the master marketing agreement between Berea City School District and Arcadia Towers LLC, as shown in the exhibit.
So moved. Second.
So I'm going to start and ask you what questions you have. Instead, I mean, the con, I actually put the executive content into the public content so that the public understands what we're doing. So this is just the agreement, Mike can stop me if I'm wrong. We enter into the agreement for them to, they've already done a study. We have a, a place where the cell tower would probably be beneficial. It looks like that there's a spot around Grindstone. So this just is the, this allows us to enter into the agreement for them to start then to look for potential carriers who would join that cellphone, that tower, if it's actually put in place. They would do all the work that would have to go through city council and it kind of permits, anything like that, to actually construct it. And we wouldn't have to do that. And it, it is a way for us to actually generate a little bit of revenue for the district through the, through this agreement. So if you have specific questions. I added also, Mike had done a, a document, so I, it's in the executive content in there, just some of the highlights of it, should I say. Worked very closely with an attorney at NS Britton to review the contract. He actually did a really good job of going through it and kind of pointing out some of the things that Arcadia had, had put in, but then made some changes and recommendations to benefit and make, to keep the district in a good spot.
Yeah, I've read that several other districts, either in our area or across Ohio, have entered into similar agreements. So I wonder what your colleagues have said about, you know, profitability or how it has benefited their districts.
Mike talked specifically to North Royalton. North Royalton actually had one, generated revenue over years. They recently sold it. And when they sold it, they actually used the money from that. They have, they built a turf baseball field, so they were able to do some things with that. I don't know what the total, but do you know what their total revenue was, Mike? Oh, he does. There you go.
So one of the things that we hope with the tower is that more than one carrier's interested. They can hold up to three carriers on it, so then that would, you get two, it doubles your revenue. It, you get three, it triples it. And so our take is twenty-five percent of whatever, of the rent that they have. And so what Royalton did is they sold their rights away for thirty years and took all the money basically upfront, of which then it was one-point-one million dollars, I believe, that they were able to then use to put into infrastructure. So we, Jill and I started this process probably a year and a half ago. The Ohio School Council highly recommended Arcadia, because they have done so many of these agreements and everyone that they've worked with has been very happy with their work. So we felt comfortable with that recommendation. You guys have another approval ahead of you. So what would happen is, before anything gets built or anything goes up, you guys have to approve that. So you, you would get more details about how many carriers, where, where's it going to be, and what does that look like? So this is just the agreement for them to go out and try and attract people to join this tower. So that's what, that's what this is today. They have, I believe, sixty days. So that's what, that's what this is today. They have, I believe, 60 days to get back to us with, we have these many carriers, this is what we're looking at, this would be the space. Royalton, I do want to point out, had more than one. They had numerous, as you know, North Royalton's up on the hill, and so it's very attractive to cellphone places because it's a higher spot. So.
If this agreement is, you know, reading through it, it sounds like it's the beginning of the process where we agree to allow them to kind of stake out our properties, look for suitable locations for this tower. Have we executed this contract already? Okay. But you said they've already scoped it out and...
So that's, that's the initial thing for them even to get interested, is they run a viability study where they, they can literally see, I don't know if you have that packet, Tracy, where you could show them the grindstone, and the red area is area without good reception. And so they've just taken a look at that to see if they were even interested. They, they believe that they are at this point. And obviously, the grindstone site would be a space that they're interested in. This phase is going out now to see if there's carriers interested in getting onto a tower if they were to put one there.
Yeah, if you turn to, there's a, if you go to that page, Rick, yep, right there, next one. This is where they've done, and they look at their, they look at that, was it their IQ score of an area? And so the redder it is, yes. Orange-ish is where there needs to be...
Better coverage?
Better coverage. And that actually happens to be right around Grindstone.
And I'm not immersed in this world, but maybe Chris could get up and explain it. But they said the movement to 6G is going to have more people looking for towers. I don't even know how that works, but we should be moving in that direction.
Will there be any rezoning? Or, I mean, you have to get approval from the city. Do we anticipate not our...
Wouldn't be. They would, they would go to, they would go to the city and they would have that meeting with the city. Yeah. And we have not talked to the city about it. So that's part of their, that's part of this next step with them, is to actually then even go to the city, whatever they have to present to the city to be able to put it up.
Are there any other questions? So you're saying approving this agreement, but there will be a, once the site has been determined and they're ready to actually build, it would come to us?
Yes, because they would be doing it on our property. So you guys would still have to approve that next step.
Okay. I'm just, I mean, I'm just wondering, like, if, if we, we allow them to do all this work and we kind of like are going to want to be able to, you know, we want to think that we would go ahead and proceed with it.
There's no promises. They know that business is business. They owe us $1,000 if you guys approve this. Then they get to go do their work. And then once they, we sign the contract, we get another $5,000. And we get $5,000 every renewal after it. So the first agreement is for five years, then it's one-year agreements for the next five years. And each one of those comes with another $5,000 renewal fee that they owe us.
We'll have to take a roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Number 29, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the August 25 revisions as shown in the policy exhibits.
So moved.
Are we voting on these?
Yeah, these are revisions.
These are all revisions?
There is one that says, at least one that I saw that said no.
Which one?
And I...
There's one to, there's one to delete.
I'm looking over the overview document.
Yeah, so not all of those were put in.
Revised, revised.
Yeah. Not all of those policies are on this agenda.
Okay.
So the ones that are on here are all for revision purposes only.
Second.
Oh, sorry, nobody's seconded. Sorry.
You wanting to go through them?
Yeah. Do you want, I mean, Mike usually goes through them all. Do you want him to go through them? Or do you have enough from the...
I have a question about one of them, but...
Okay. Go ahead. Yeah.
The, the one about 92-70, the participation in extracurricular for students not enrolled. I feel like we've made changes in the past. What's the difference with this one?
We're removing.
You have a legislature that's changed its mind, is what you have. But actually, 243002, 2431, and 92-70 are all basically connected. You are right, Anna. We last, I think it was at one of the Be a Titan ceremonies, we passed that legislation where we allowed students who were from other school districts that were bullied, intimidated, harassed, to be able to come to our district if the superintendent agreed. They've, with House Bill 96, they've now reversed themselves and they've said that it's open to homeschool students, but not to, not to anyone else in any other districts for interscholastic athletics or extracurriculars, which I don't know about homeschool students being bullied at home, but...
So the homeschool is only if they're being bullied?
No.
No. No. It was...
For anybody who attends homeschool. Okay.
So they took that out in all three of those policies. Yeah, so they've reversed what they said earlier.
Yeah.
But still, if a student attends a school that doesn't have that sport, they can still participate here?
Yes. Yes. And ice hockey. Don't forget about ice hockey.
We actually didn't include that in this.
We didn't include it because we don't have ice hockey. But that was one, remember, that was, that was one part of the bill that was just focused specifically on ice hockey.
But we have students that have participated in other districts.
They can go to play ice hockey somewhere else, yes.
Their districts would need to have that.
They don't need my permission to do that. They need to have the permission of that school district, correct.
Any other questions on any of the other policies? Okay. Then let's go ahead and roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
And then number 30, it's recommended the Board of Education rescind Policy 7541 as shown in the exhibit below.
So moved.
Second.
And that's the one that's already in, in policy. It's already covered in Policy 8300. So we still have it, it's just in a different policy.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Onto Treasurer's Update.
Okay. So tonight I'm presenting the, I guess we're going to call it the four-year forecast. It's still, I still did it as a five-year forecast. The software still allows us to do that. That is best practice to continue to do it that way. It will be submitted in the format that the legislature's wanted in, which is a four-year forecast. Again, this tool was used as a long-range planning tool. This is a very important document for the district. That's, I think I've stated that before. We use this a lot to, to gauge the health of the district and where we're at. It also allows me to sign 412 certificates, which are contracts. The new filing requirements for this year, the initial forecast is due Wednesday, October 15th. The required update is due February 28th, 2026. Moving forward, what the legislator wants us, the initial forecast is due August 31st, and the required update again is due February 28th. So we're moving from November and May to August and February moving forward. We're now required to submit appropriations, revenue, and fund balance assumptions contained in the budget adopted by the Board. And then the future years are going to, you know, our projections again. And again, it's a shift to a four-year forecast. We're still defining, we don't have, they're giving us a little leeway on this forecast, but what actually does appropriations mean? Because a lot of districts do appropriations differently. At year-end, we have carryover purchase orders. Some districts rebudget those. I don't, they're concluded in the forecast down at the bottom. They are in there, so they offset our cash balance. If we're required to put those in there, my, my opinion is we're always going to overstate our expenditures to rebudget them because they're already budgeted, they're already there. So we're trying to get some clarification from the auditor's office and, you know, DEW on what is, what exactly do you want in there? Because the auditors do look at our forecasts. And, you know, they ask us a bunch of questions and just to make sure, you know, people aren't, you know, doing things wrong and to catch stuff quicker. Challenges, I think I brought some of these up, especially with these new forecast deadlines, especially August. Our permanent appropriations, our budgets aren't due to the county until September 30th. So, I mean, normally they're done. Normally I have them ready to go on July 1st. But in smaller school districts, people start with temporary appropriations and then they complete their permanent appropriations and file to the county by September 30th. That'll back that up. New hires, our new hires, when they, they have 30 days to apply for the health insurance. So they have till around September 15th, give or take a day, to, to apply for the health insurance. So we're really going to try to button that up and make sure we, we get the forms a lot sooner for that August deadline. But we don't even have, like, the new payroll isn't even, and we're still paying on the old contracts. So that August date is, it's going to be a little challenging. When the new biennial budget's passed, we just had the new biennial budget, our state foundation is not updated until right now. The first payment in October, some of the formulas were updated. And then the second payment in October, our actual enrollment will be updated. So I don't have, the enrollment's not in our foundation payments. It's based off of last year's enrollment. I have estimates in the forecast, but to have it in November where we actually had the state foundation and actually had a truer look on the state foundation, it was just better. The May forecast, again, that was the more accurate forecast by far because all of our, almost all of our revenue, 95% of it was completed by that point. All of our taxes were in, you know, only a few things were hanging out there. And 83% of our expenditures had occurred at that point. So it's really easy to, to look at the last couple months and make good assumptions and make a more accurate forecast. The May forecast also would include, for the next year, it would include the budgets that the departments do, the buildings do. We usually would start the budget process around March. I would meet with the departments in April. That's what went into the next year on the forecast. Some things might have changed immaterially by the time, you know, July came around, but, but those were set. So that, that made the next year more accurate in the forecast. Again, we use this document a lot, so it's just going to take more time to constantly update it. This year, I probably will do a February and then a May forecast, so you guys will see a revision in May. By then, we'll have all of our tax revenue in. And then moving forward, again, like I said, I'd probably do four submissions, do August, do November, do February, and then do May, just so they're accurate. Because we do use the document a lot. So as of today, our forecasted revenue for, for this year is around 86.7 million. It grows slightly as we move out into the forecast. I was a little conservative. We, we just went through reappraisal. We'll have a triennial update coming up. And usually those aren't huge increases in our valuation for us. So again, revenue is pretty much flatlined. If we go to the next slide and go to real estate, again, our real estate taxes, we saw the, we saw a jump last year, but again, that was only on our inside millage because we are not on the 20-mill floor. We'll talk more about that in the, in my property tax update. But again, minimal increases in real estate moving, moving out. We'll see what the legislature does with that. Why is that? Again, we're not on the 20-mill floor, House Bill 920. We only get what we got the first year the levy was passed on voted millage. So we got $400,000 in 1988. Today, we get $400,000. If you go to the, I believe, the next slide, Vicky, what the county does is they, they, they take our full voted millage and then they roll it back to get to that figure. So as you can see, our Class 1, as, as I do valuation increases assumptions, we're still in the forecast period out to 24.46 mils. We're not, we're not close to the 20-mill floor within the forecast period. Might we get there in the next 10 years? We'll see what all this legislation does. But, but still, even within the forecast period, our class, you know, our residential taxes, I'm not estimating that we're going to get close to the 20-mill floor. So we're only going to see increases on our inside millage, which is four mils, 4.05 mils, which is minimal. Public utility. So I spent some time on, on public utility. When going through the forecast, public utility, it's full voted millage. We get 76 mils on this. Going through, I saw our collection rates usually 100%. Usually, the public utilities always pay. At the end of the year last year, our collection rate was 93.5%, which we still don't know why. We're, we're still asking questions on which public utility didn't pay. Did they not pay? Are they filing, you know, a complaint? It's probably one of the bigger ones, First Energy or Dominion. So, but we, we still don't have a lot of answers because a lot of that information is not public. Public utilities had big lobbyists. Public utilities are probably going to see a lot of the relief. Let's put it with, with all these, because they can pay to do it. So we're still trying to figure out why our collection rate was only at 93.5 at the end of, the end of spring collections last year. In 2027, moving forward, this was in House Bill 926, valuation on new construction will be decreased. So as they build new construction, they're not, they're not going to put certain things into the formula, so we see the increases like we have. The most direct change is the exclusion of allowances for funds using construction and interest during construction. So the true taxable value specifically for public utilities will be decreased. So that is figured into the forecast. I don't have the increases in that I had. We actually took it down by 70%. I think I had 3.5 million in and I took increases each year because that's what it had been growing. So we took that down. Again, they have big pockets, big pockets. So we're, we're watching this. We're seeing what's going on. We're not a pipeline district, but the pipeline's finally settled. I think both of the pipelines settled. So I, I think we, the school districts for some what got wins, wins on the pipelines. But again, big, big money in, in the public utilities. So we'll continue to watch that. Next slide is our state money. With the passage of House Bill 96, the fair school funding formula was still in effect. However, the formula is out, out of balance now. They did not update the state share, the local, the base cost. They left it at fiscal 22, but they updated our valuation in our income. So what's happening, everybody wants property tax relief, but what the state is doing by not updating the base cost, they're shifting the burden to the local. They're paying less because they didn't update those base costs. Because we're richer on this side of the formula. Our valuation in our income got updated. So there, there's, there's a big problem with, with property tax relief if the state would just keep up with, with what they're supposed to for us. A restricted money, if you want to go to the next slide. This was one of the lines I was, I was very concerned about and I was very conservative in the May forecast. This is our economically disadvantaged funding. It has a direct correlation to our CEP, every, every kid eats free. There was a lot of talk of, of changing this formula and, and taking us back to instead of being 99% economically disadvantaged because we're on CEP, back to our 44% that we were. They did change the formula, but it wasn't as bad. They, they did a weighted formula of our CEP versus our Drex cert, and so it's weighted for the next two years. And I've left it in there. It's a more fair formula, I, I think, for all, all districts. We got lucky. If a district jumps in this year because of the new formula and how, how it's calculated based on 25 and 26, they will not see an increase like we did. So why, by us jumping in last year, we, we, I don't want to say got lucky, but we, we met in, so any new district joining, so it will help the, the pot. It'll help the big urbans who have been in it forever. And when we jumped in, we took money from them. So this, this will make it more fair. So I have left that formula in moving through the forecast. Because there's no indication that it's, it's going to change unless they fund it like it's supposed to be funded, and then we'll get more. But that won't happen, so. Expenses, you can see expenses on here. Forecasted, we're up to 89 million in the forecast period. This does include the collective bargaining agreements that we settled in the spring for three years in the forecast. As you can see, payroll and benefits make up our biggest, biggest buck, you know, biggest line item in here. It's about almost 80% of our, of our expenses. Moving forward in the forecast, you know, the benefits include retirement, health insurance, workers' comp, and Medicare. Health insurance, we had a very, very, very good year this year. We... We saw a 1.4% increase. That was with a plan design change that was negotiated, that the unions negotiated with us, so that brought it down to 1.4. We've had several good years with our health insurance. Moving forward, there's about 8 to 10% figured in in inflation, so I think that we'll be okay with that. Line 6.010 is revenues minus expenses without any cash. As you can see, this year, we're projected to start deficit spending. There is a caveat, though, that I haven't figured in this forecast that we just received the other day. I think you all saw in the paper that the county's going to give us money back for our real estate, for the real estate appraisal, unprecedented numbers. That's not figured into this forecast just yet. And that's about $860,000 we're going to get back from the county. It's a big chunk, so that's going to help with this deficit. Plus with tightening up the budgets, and usually the departments and buildings give me money back every year, they don't always spend all their money. So we're going to start watching this. All the property tax reform that I'm going to talk about next, we're going to continue to watch that. But if you get down to our cash balance line item, this year, we're projected to end the year at 27.6 million in cash balance. It goes quick with those deficit balances, but again, we have a lot of, there's a very veteran staff here, so retirees are going to, you saw them on the agenda already start coming through. That swing in payroll will be key for the district over the next couple of years, keeping our health insurance down because getting that 8% down to 1% again, or 2%, we've done a really good job at managing that. When I first came in, we were, we had a couple of bad years in our health insurance. So this, again, will be updated. There's still some stuff, again, I'm waiting for, I'm waiting for our state foundation to get updated. I have estimates in there, but I, so they get the actual enrollment in there that feeds everything. And then, again, I got to figure in that real estate assessments or that real estate payback. So I'll constantly keep updating these. Your monthly reports will be updated, it gets updated right off of the forecast because it's, you know, the monthly cash flow. So any questions on the forecast?
I was going to ask about the payroll, what you were expecting for people retiring, like, the people who are eligible already to retire. What, like approximately, how will that change, all of this, once you put that in?
We have approximately, I think, when we did it last year, there was over 30 eligible, I think. 32 eligible.
Last year?
Yes.
So that would be higher this year?
Yes, that would be higher, yes. And it'll keep growing, you know, unless they change the rules again. I think that sunsets the 32 years at some point, so. And it is, it's a big swing when you're taking out a master's 30 to maybe a BA zero. And the BA zeros a lot of times come in and they don't take the health insurance. So there's 40, $50,000 swing right there in payroll. So we're watching it, we're monitoring it. I do have the retirees that we've already had figured into the forecast, so, and as they come, I figure, I put them in, so we just got to keep monitoring it and see, and again, if STRS changes the rule. It does sunset the 32 years at some point.
Five years, wasn't it? They said five years when they, yeah, but what I'm hearing now, STRS is, oh, they're trying to make that permanent, so.
Oh, okay, good. Can you go to the property tax one? So there's been a lot of flurry in Columbus about the property taxes. So I think everybody saw, the Senate passed the other day, they voted to override the veto of the governor, which stated that was, that we couldn't do emergency levies, we couldn't do substitute levies, and we couldn't do replacement levies. No new levies. Emergency levies are fixed dollar levies. You ask the public to give you $3 million. Substitute levies, bring it back, and replacement levies, bring old levies up to current standard, so it's a tax increase. Same with an emergency levy. So that veto did happen, or the override, and it's in effect within 90 days. There's other legislation that piggybacks off of that, though, and I'll get to that in a second. So what has happened? There's historical trends. In 1991, homeowners and farmers paid 47% of the property taxes. Now we're up, they're up to nearly 70% in 2023. The state has not kept up with inflation, has not kept up with funding for schools. And again, with the formula, since they didn't update the base cost, they're paying less. So it puts more burden on our local taxpayers.
I'm sorry, can you, back to that one. 47% of the taxes that are coming from the state were?
No, 40, you paid 47% of the bill, the state picked up 53%.
Okay, and, okay, so they're just pushing it down more onto the homeowner, okay.
What also has changed, the elimination of the business tangible personal property tax, the TPP, that hit us very hard. That was about $11 million at one time for us. That went away finally in 2023. The rollback credits, the 12 and 1/2% of your property tax bills, the credits you get, any new levies passed after 2012 don't receive those credits, so you don't get that credit on that levy. So, and the state reimburses us for that, so again, they're paying us less. And again, rising home values, you know, for districts, especially on the 20-mill floor, as valuation goes up, they see the increases. We're not on the 20-mill floor, so we only get increases on the inside millage. They're still rolling us back. So, sorry, this is so small, and I can send this to you. Current legislation, this has been passed by the House, House Bill 129. Basically, this piggybacks off of the veto. I think they were, I don't want to, maybe compromising a little bit. Any emergency levy approved by voters before 2026 may be renewed. So districts that have emergency levies right now may be renewed, but they need to be called fixed sum levies. Emergency is scary to people, so fixed sum, fixed dollar amount. The duration, up to 10 years, which emergency levies now, you can do up to 10 years, and the rollback credits, if they were passed prior to 2013, those still carry. They're not going to take them away. They were, they specifically put that in there because they missed that. Everybody's like, well, if I renew it, I'm going to lose my 12 and 1/2 credit from the state. So they did put that in there. Same thing with the substitute levies. If you had them, you can renew them. But you have to renew them as a fixed sum levy. You have to call it a certain dollar levy. The rollback credits also. They've created a new fiscal distress or disaster levy. This is, if you're in fiscal emergency, watch your caution, or a major disaster has been declared by the president or the governor. You can, up to five years, nonrenewable. Existing emergency and substitute levies approved before 2026 will be included now on the 20-mill floor, before they were not included in the calculation of the 20-mill floor. On the next reappraisal or triennial update, they've given districts a little bit of time now to figure out. This was, this was going to be in effect immediately in, I think, the original bill, that they were going to, in the next tax year, they were going to put the substitute and emergency levies in there. But now they're saying reappraisal or triennial update, they'll give you a little bit of time to plan because it's going to pull you off the floor. So you're not going to see those increases you were expecting. And any new fixed sum levies passed would be subject to the 20-mill floor calculation, so.
We don't have any of those, right?
No, this one doesn't really affect us, but for the fight of the greater good, a lot of districts have emergency levies. They did them specifically to not hurt their 20-mill floor. They needed the money and they did them, so this is for the greater fight, I guess.
It's, I mean, for those districts that have it and are on the 20-mill floor, it's a double whammy for those school districts.
It's going to pull them off the floor, but at least, again, they gave them a little bit of time to plan, so. This next one, House Bill 309, county budget commissions. I was on a webinar today, and they stressed to tell the board, you guys should be mad. They're taking control away from you to run your school district and letting the county budget commissions determine this stuff. And think about it that way. Our county budget commission in Cuyahoga County, we are so large, and they're dealing with so many entities. I don't know if this is going to affect us or not, but it's giving them the right to reduce our levies if they see fit, if there's reasonable, necessary, or prudent to avoid unnecessary or excessive collections.
It's not only taking our power away, it's taking the taxpayers' decision away. Right, it's after it's already voted.
Yes. And again, we're so large in Cuyahoga County, I don't know, I don't, I don't know. I don't know if this is going to affect us or not. It's talking about, you know, carryover balance is greater than 100%. That doesn't affect us, we're not there. You know, other things through here, so this is going to, I know other counties have taken this already. You know, there's other counties who have told their school districts you're giving money back, especially during the reappraisal, they were all on the 20-mill floor. They overstretched, and I think we all questioned, what authority do they have to do this? Well, now they're trying to define it for us. So I know some counties got hit pretty hard, some school districts did, over on the eastern side of the state, and some of the rurals who, again, there's also two questions of the county prosecutor sitting on the county budget commission, because technically, the county prosecutor could be our attorney by law. So I think, is that, I don't know. So we're going to follow this one, you know, just to see. Again, I don't know in Cuyahoga County if we'll get that far. That was also passed by the House, it's in the Senate, so it'll probably go the ways and means. Substitute, House Bill 186, they amended this one. This one was to cap inside millage to 1%, 1% growth. That you couldn't get your full inside millage, you could only grow 1%. They were putting an inflation cap on it. This one, they, what we're concerned about with this one is it's proactive. It goes back, or retroactive, I'm sorry, it's retroactive. It goes back several years. It doesn't, if, they went back several years and gave money back because we grew more than 1%, which last year we would have because of reappraisal, that's detrimental to this year right now when you're trying to make payroll. So we're closely watching this one, too, because of, they put the retroactive application into it. I think they're going to go back two years, and again, it would affect us because we did get the increase last year because of reappraisal. Our increase on inside millage went up 18%, so we're watching this one very closely. This also is, 335 is also similar to that, is the cap on inside millage. This is, both House Bill 186 and 355 are now consistent, you know, using the inflationary amount. So we are going to keep watching these bills, I'm sure more are coming. Sure, they, they keep introducing them and they all kind of are like the same. These are the major ones, though, because 129 and, 129 and 309 move very quickly through the House, and they're now in the Senate. So again, they don't really affect us too much, we're just going to have to watch the county budget commission authority and see, you know, what they're going to do, so. I will keep you updated as, over the next few weeks, because I'm sure these are going to move very quickly. I know there's call for relief. We don't disagree that something should happen, but we need to do it together, and we need to figure it out together. And I don't, I don't know that that's happening right now.
Thank you, Jill. We'll give you a moment to get back to your chair as we proceed. Item two on the consent agenda, it's recommended that items E3 through E10 be approved as part of the consent agenda unless a Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed.
So moved.
Second.
All very standard items. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Number 11, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the distribution of change funds as indicated in the table below.
So moved.
Second.
Briefly, Mrs. Renee Ndoma, a teacher at BPE, she received an education foundation grant last year for a popcorn machine, and she used it in her curriculum to teach the kids how to count and behavior also, too. They got, they go down and get the popcorn if they had good behavior. This year, she is going to sell the popcorn nominally, very cheap. And then if they make any money off of it, they're going to, kids can choose where to donate it to, so she's, yeah, a dollar. Yep, they're going to tie it into the curriculum again, and there were volunteers earlier on the agenda that are going to help her out with it, so.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Number 12, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the attached five-year forecast as submitted by the treasurer and direct her to submit these documents to the Ohio Department of Education by the required deadline.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Under regular business minutes approval, it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the September 15th regular meeting as shown in the exhibit.
So moved.
Second.
There any changes? Roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Zirke?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Michael?
Abstained.
Item number two, legislative update, Mrs. Chapman.
Well, the legislature is back after a long summer break, and they've had active committee meetings last week and this week, and there are several new pieces of legislation that could affect schools. House Bill 485 is called the Baby Olivia Act, which would require schools to show an anti-abortion fetal development video every year starting in third grade. And it had its first hearing last week. House Bill 486, and one of the co-sponsors of this one is our representative, the Charlie Kirk American Heritage Act, and this declares the following to be true, that the teaching of the historical positive impact of religion on American history is consistent with the First Amendment. An accurate and historical account of the influence of Christianity on the freedom and liberties ingrained in our culture is imperative to reducing ignorance of American history, hate, and violence within our society. Accurate historical instruction regarding verifiable historical impacts of religion on American history is factual and is not proselytization or a violation of the First Amendment. So it's allowing schools to teach how Christianity has affected American history. And it had a first hearing last week. Senate Bill 272 also had a first hearing last week, and this would allow high school students to take a civics assessment based on the U.S. Naturalization Test as an alternative to the American Government End of Course Exam. The test would be identical to the civics portion of the Naturalization Test administered by the U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services. House Bill 309, Jill just talked about that one, the county budget commissions. House Bill 455 is a huge, more than 500 pages-long education bill that was introduced, updating some of the Ohio's Parents' Bill of Rights, changing a few things. And here are some of those things. It still requires an alert to parents if their student wishes to identify differently than their sex assigned at birth. However, it adds an exception to not report changes if there is reasonable belief that telling a student's parents would harm the child. In those cases, educators must report changes to law enforcement or child protective services. The bill would also remove other mental health changes from required reporting. The law would only require parents to be informed of mental health updates if their student exhibits suicidal ideation or persisting symptoms of depression or severe anxiety. Also, currently, parents have the opportunity to review any instructional materials that involve sexuality content and can refuse to allow their students to participate. But this bill would have parents review the content of the lessons, not the specific instructional materials. Also, charter school sponsors would no longer have to report their annual expenditures to the state. This would no longer require online schools to disenroll and report students to the state if they miss state assessments two years in a row. And remove the Tutor Ohio Kids Program, a remedial program that offered tutoring to students in participating charter in public schools. That's just a few things of the 500 pages. Senate Bill 156 and House Bill 269 is one that had already been introduced before the summer, which is the one that requires schools to teach students to graduate high school, get a job, get married, and then have kids, in that order. Has a hearing tomorrow at 3:00. And then all the other ones are things that had already been around, and they don't have any hearings scheduled yet.
Okay, thank you very much. Board of Education, any committee reports?
Business Advisory Council met last week. We had lunch, it was at Polaris, and there was a panel of students, one, one student from each of the component districts, and they made sure that each of those students represented a different line of instruction. And they were asked questions from the audience and from the
instruction, and they were asked questions from the audience and from the instructors as well. Very impressive. Kids, kids were very mature and unbelievably comfortable up there, even though they might have claimed otherwise, they handled it like pros. So that's an example of what we're putting out there, then keep it up. Um, wonderful, wonderful, uh, meeting. And then, uh, Board of Education comments, were there any of those?
I'll be speaking at, uh, Berea PTA Council Meeting on Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, at seven o'clock in this room. Um, so I've been asked to talk about my experience serving on the board and conceptions about school board service, and so everyone is welcome.
Anything else?
Um, I just wanted to express my support for the resolution, um, for the event amendments for the Ohio School Board Association, um, that was voted on at the last meeting.